Gathered at the Guess Headquarters for the 15th Annual Denim Day in L.A. Denim Day came about after a 1997 Italian court case in which a judge did not convict a man accused of rape because he said the victim wore jeans.
Since the attacker would not have been able to get them off without help, this was not rape, but consensual sex. This became known as the jeans alibi, or the sexy clothing defense, or the consent defense. This caused an uproar.
This year, Guess, known for its trend-setting denim, is partnering with Peace Over Violence to support Denim Day. It's the first major company to join the initiative.
This is the beginning of a long road for us, and we are so proud to be part of that and that we've got selected to be the main corporation to do it.
According to the LAPD, a rape is reported at least once a day in the city of Los Angeles, while many others go unreported. Advocates hope Denim Day will serve as a voice for these victims while reminding others that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape.
You are not alone. There is help. All of us are here. You can go to safelaa.org, or you can call the national hotline number 1-800-799-7233.
The goal of Denim Day is to educate the public about sexual violence and to provide support for sexual assault survivors. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Guess has also committed to donating $100,000 to help further the efforts of Peace Over Violence. The Los Angeles Police Department also wants to raise awareness about child abuse and issues surrounding child safety. Yana K. reports on the LAPD's efforts during Child Abuse Awareness Month.
This dad is keeping a close eye on his little boy at the park. For most parents, their kid's safety is a main concern, but they can always benefit from some helpful safety tips. That's why the LAPD's Child Unit detectives kicked off its first-ever child abuse awareness campaign.
We want parents to become informed and educated and learn ways to keep their babies safe.
Various booths were set up on the plaza outside LAPD Headquarters downtown, providing a variety of safety information on child abuse, safe sleeping, dangers of shaking a baby, and safe surrender. A program that allows a new mom to safely and anonymously drop off her unwanted child to a safe surrender site, such as a hospital or a fire department, 72 hours after the child is born.
Now, this awareness campaign not only gives great information on how to keep babies and younger children safe, but it also gives parents of older children some good advice, especially when it comes to teens and sexting.
The best thing that parents can do is try to get, have good communication with their, with their kids. Get the passwords. Check where they're going. Check who they're talking to. There's nothing like just preventing something before it happens.
Officials say if parents take a proactive approach in learning a few simple safety tips, they will be better prepared to handle any situation that may come up. I'm Yana K. for L.A. This Week.
Now that summer is around the corner, officials suggest parents learn CPR and never leave a young child unsupervised near a pool. He's just shy of celebrating a year in office, but City Attorney Mike Fewer has a full plate when it comes to fighting for the city's legal rights. He recently spoke to the media about how he's doing more with fewer and fewer resources. Here's Anna Marcos.
He inherited an office with only 60% of the staff his predecessor started with, an office full of computer hand-me-downs discarded by other departments. But L.A.'s top legal crusader, City Attorney Mike Fewer, has wasted no time while in office. Among his current legal battles, a court judgment that will allow the city to investigate LADWP records and find out how millions in taxpayer funds were spent.
We're going to continue to stand up for the right of the rape pairs to have as much transparency as possible.
In this so-called coffee klatch, Fewer made clear he's out to fight for the rights of Angelinos. Whether it's dealing with taxpayer funds, bank foreclosures, patient dumping on Skid Row, environmental justice, or gun violence, he now has a key person in his office to deal with gun violence prevention.
It seems to me that our office needs to be a leader, not just here in Los Angeles, and not just in the state, but nationally.
In spite of limited resources, Fewer has been able to add 52 staff members this year, and he has restructured his office to include a risk management section to deal with lawsuits and other financial risks. Among the new staff added are eight neighborhood prosecutors.
If the job is done right, a neighborhood prosecutor is the quarterback for problem-solving at a community level.
With shrinking resources, Fewer has come up with new ideas for restoring lesser criminals instead of jailing them. Prostitutes and Johns in a recent prostitution sting in the valley were sent to rehab school instead of jail. Fewer is also cutting costs by taking back cases formerly given to outside counsel, all part of doing more with less to protect the rights of all law-abiding Angelinos. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Fewer is also involved in a multi-agency effort to bring gang members to justice, especially those involved in weapons and narcotics sales. It wasn't always the case, but more and more markets in South L.A. are now carrying fresh fruits and vegetables. Yana K. has more.
Shoppers at this convenience store on Vermont Avenue in South Los Angeles are picking out fresh produce, including apples, bananas, and tangerines, a welcome change for those looking for healthier options in the community.
Yes, I am happy, and hopefully there's more stores around this community like this because this exchanges community and making more healthy for kids to, to eat healthy and get the day started healthy, right?
The community came to shop at the newly renovated Alba Snacks and Services Market, which debuted a new storefront and updated interior design.
We're working hard to clean up these streets, clean up the alleys, get the bulky items off, providing new resources, closing problem liquor stores, and saluting and celebrating the opening of markets like this.
The market makeover was made possible by the Los Angeles Food Policy Council, a nonprofit that works with businesses to help provide healthy options in South L.A.
That's why we're here today, is to expand access to healthy food, because it's everyone's right to have food that is affordable and accessible at their fingertips so that we could all be healthier.
Formerly called the $1 warehouse, Alba Snacks and Services also carries yogurt, berries, and trail mix. The store owner says he was happy to make the change. He says, "I decided to offer healthier products and teamed up with the city of Los Angeles to make this happen." The healthier store is intended to serve as a model for other convenience stores in the area, and so far, the idea seems to be a big hit. I'm Yana K. for L.A. This Week.
The Los Angeles Food Policy Council has trained more than 200 corner store owners and other retailers on how to sell healthier foods. A young cardiac arrest survivor gets the opportunity to reunite with those who helped save his life. Rasha Goel has more.
I feel like the luckiest guy in the world.
Jode Lebeda was running the 2014 ASICS L.A. Marathon when he went into cardiac arrest in West Los Angeles. Thanks to the collaborative effort between the Los Angeles Fire Department and a team of medical professionals, Jode is able to thank them in person.
It's mind-boggling to think of all the different factors that really had to come into play just to allow me to be here. It's unbelievable.
The 28-year-old says he was in a medically induced coma for nearly a week and doesn't remember much of what happened on the day of the race. Doctors say he had a close call.
He was a breath, you know, he was a life's breath away. I mean, it's a scary thought, but again, thanks to the tremendous effort of those that were on scene, we're able to start CPR very quickly, stabilize him, and get him to UCLA.
Officials say it's a lesson we can all learn from.
This serves as a great reminder to the public about the importance of bystander CPR and the access to automatic external defibrillators that can be found in many public places throughout the city.
Jode was only six miles away from the finish line. He may not have been able to finish the race, but he was awarded a 2014 finisher medal and recognized as a champ. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Medical experts also advise getting a full checkup and informing your doctor prior to taking part in physically demanding activities like a marathon. Several communities are getting their sidewalks repaired as council members dig into their district funds near the end of the fiscal year. Gilreas takes us to northeast Los Angeles, where some senior citizens are taking safer strolls around the neighborhood.
We've been friends for many, many years.
Dolores Fenton and her friends walk and breathe a little easier these days on the way to their neighborhood hangout, the Highland Park Senior Center, but it was no easy stroll two years ago when overgrown tree roots buckled the sidewalk and threatened their safety.
All the roots were growing bigger and, and higher, and the sidewalks were tipping upwards. So you couldn't even walk on the sidewalk.
But the risk of tripping and falling appears to be far less now, with trees trimmed, sidewalks repaired, and a fresh batch of concrete about to cover this stretch of Figueroa Street.
No matter what part of the city you live in, we all deserve great sidewalks, great streets.
It's all part of Highland Park Area Councilman Jose Wezars' $1.5 million plan to renovate streets and sidewalks in northeast L.A.
The end goal is to have people feel more comfortable walking down their neighborhood.
Plans also include 400 more trash cans on sidewalks to help keep neighborhoods clean. To help keep the air clean, city crews are getting down and dirty to get the job done while using clean fuel vehicles.
Right now sanitation in the city of Los Angeles has the largest clean fuel vehicles in the country.
And where trees are needed, the group Northeast Trees will be planting them. 200 more are planned for the area. Local youth will be hired to help, in hopes of making that leisurely stroll to the senior center's art class even more pleasant.
Our seniors are very happy here.
Part of that money will also go towards adding more movable surveillance cameras in the area to crack down on illegal dumping. Where exactly those cameras will be placed will remain a secret, part of the strategy of keeping culprits off guard and crime low in this area. In Highland Park, Gilreas for L.A. This Week.
And on top of that, Council District 14 is due for even more street improvements through Mayor Garcetti's Great Streets Initiative. Expect that program to renovate Caesar Chavez Boulevard. And in Pacoima, students are also grateful for new sidewalk repairs making their walk to school a whole lot safer. Yana K. has more.
Walking to school on a sidewalk may not seem like a big deal, but for these McClay Middle School students in Pacoima, it makes all the difference in the world.
I'm like really appreciative that we could actually finally have a safe way to go to school.
Major sidewalk improvements were completed on Borden Avenue between Pierce and Terabella Street, all thanks to a joint effort between the City of L.A.'s Department of Public Works, the L.A. Unified School District, and the state's Safe Route to School Program, all working together.
To make sure that we leverage every single dollar to its maximum, so that we get the most bang for our buck, and more importantly, we get safe routes to schools.
Before the improvements, a blanket of mud from the hillside ran all the way down to the pavement, and to avoid it, kids had to walk on the busy street or on dirt paths.
I used to come here every day, so I really saw it a lot, and I saw how dangerous it was just walking past here. But then when they fixed it, it was really pretty, and I was able to walk here without, scared of falling or hurting myself.
Now, the project took about eight months to complete, and it included the building of the seven-foot-high retaining wall, along with about 700 square feet of sidewalk, including a curb and a gutter.
Because we want all of these beautiful children here to get to school every day on time, safe. 100% attendance, 100% graduation, that's our goal.
Students helped cut the red ribbon, a sign that their route to school is now safe and sound. I'm Yana K. for L.A. This Week.
LADWP opens on Saturdays for a few more weeks to help with billing disputes. LAX celebrates the one-year anniversary of its PUP program, and city leaders commemorate the Armenian genocide. These stories and more in City Beat.
The L.A. Department of Water and Power is keeping four regional customer service centers open every Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. until May 17th. The extra hours are to help resolve customer issues resulting from a new billing system.
What we've seen mostly are the delayed bills, where these normal billing hasn't been issued regularly for our bi-monthly or monthly customers. So when we get the bill out, it's a little larger than they're used to because it's covering more time.
$3,092, come on.
This is great because I don't have time in the, in the week.
The four customer centers that are open Saturdays to resolve billing issues are Crenshaw, Van Nuys, Watts, and West L.A. LAX is celebrating the one-year anniversary of its PUP program, which stands for Pets Unstressing Passengers. It's a program in which therapy dogs and their handlers greet passengers and help to reduce travel anxiety. LAX officials say on the day after the shooting at LAX last November, Finn the therapy dog and his owner Brian visited with waiting passengers and helped to lift the tense mood. The Board of Airport Commissioners recognized the program during its recent meeting, honoring the program's 30 pup volunteer and pet teams. Councilmember Paul Krikorian, who is of Armenian descent, led the L.A. City Council in commemorating the 99th anniversary of the beginning of the Armenian genocide at the hands of the Turkish government.
Their death opened the door to atrocities that would continue to occur throughout the remainder of the 20th century and sadly continue to occur in parts of the world even as we stand and speak here today.
The Armenian government and Armenian-American communities continue to urge the Turkish government to acknowledge their responsibility in the genocide and to make restitutions. Every so often, the Los Angeles Fire Department takes the opportunity after a house fire to remind residents to make sure they install and test out their smoke alarms. A recent fire in the city's West Adams neighborhood sent a man to the hospital in critical condition.
We have a program for our schoolchildren. We have a program where firefighters come out after an unfortunate fire to pass out smoke alarms to the community to make sure that they have working smoke alarms. If they have them, the firefighters will check them for them, make sure they work.
Fire officials say while the room occupied by the man was not equipped with a functional smoke alarm, a mother and two children staying in an adjacent space equipped with smoke alarms were able to escape with lesser injuries.
Community cleanups are common here in Los Angeles, where residents are a critical part of the equation, and for the residents, they say cleaning up their neighborhoods is a matter of pride.
A beautiful Saturday spent cleaning up trash from the streets, it's becoming a familiar sight in Councilman Jose Wezars' district, where these community cleanups take place every other weekend. Residents of the city's Council District 14, which encompasses Boyle Heights, Highland Park, Eagle Rock, and downtown L.A., are determined to make their district shine as bright as the next council district.
We have a, a number of areas that our community has identified as cleanup areas. We do our best through our Bureau of Sanitation and a number of other city projects, but you know, when it comes down to it, sometimes these hard-to-reach areas, it's up to the community, and, and we get out there, we organize these events, and a great way for us to have pride in our community.
And on this particular Saturday, the cleanup took place in El Serrano, with volunteers gathered on Valley Boulevard in the University Hills community. The nonprofit organization, L.A. Conservation Corps, also put at-risk youth to work, helping them gain valuable environmental work experience.
Our program specifically is called the Cleaning Green Program, and it focuses on hiring youth from 14 to 18. It's a nonprofit, and it's basically a job training program. So if the students are low-income and in the city of Los Angeles, they have an opportunity to work with us.
And while it's hard work, residents see it as an opportunity, even an obligation.
We really believe in community cleanups. We believe that it's up to us as community members to, to pick up the slack where the, where the city isn't able to.
At the end of the day, people want to do this. People are interested. People come out in droves because they just need that opportunity or that platform to get involved and help out in the community.
To find out about the next community cleanup and other community events in Council District 14, go to josewezar.com to sign up for the e-newsletter specific to your community. In this week's list of things to do, Union Station celebrates a big milestone, a bike ride to appreciate the city's murals, and a Griffith Park hike.
Historic Union Station has been serving Los Angeles County for 75 years, and on Saturday, May 3rd, the public is invited to join Metro to commemorate this iconic station's 75th birthday. The celebration also falls on National Train Day, so get ready to celebrate all things rail, taking place from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. A ceremony to rededicate the station will be held in the historic Ticket Concourse area. You'll also get to see one-of-a-kind rail cars, learn how trains work, and tour the Amtrak Exhibit Train. There will also be kid-friendly activities, including model trains on display and dance and music performances. Union Station is located at 800 North Alameda Street downtown. For details on the celebration, go to metro.net. And as part of Union Station's 75th anniversary, Metro is also sponsoring the Street Mural Ride led by Cicle. Cicle, which stands for cyclists inciting change through live exchange, in partnership with the Mural Conservancy of Los Angeles, will lead a community bicycle ride, starting and ending at Union Station. The ride will be approximately six miles and will loop through neighboring artist communities surrounding Union Station. The ride will make stops at the downtown arts district in El Pueblo de Los Angeles. Meet at Union Station at 11:00 a.m., with the ride departing from the intersection of Alameda and Caesar Chavez at 11:30 a.m. and returning by 1:30 p.m. Tickets are free, but you must RSVP. Go to Cicle, that's C-I-C-L-E dot org. And on Sunday, May 4th, Griffith Park Ranger Ernie Ibarra will be leading another hike, this one a 2.5-mile intermediate-level hike to Trails Cafe. You're also welcome to pack your own meal. After breakfast, you will take the same path back. The hike will depart at 8:00 a.m. Meet at the Griffith Park Observatory parking lot near the restrooms. The Griffith Observatory is located at 2800 East Observatory Road. As usual, be sure to dress accordingly and bring water and snacks. Dogs are welcome, but they must remain on leashes at all times. For more information, email theranger@ernie.ebarra@lacity.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
City leaders continue to make good on their promise to build more parks, and Patton Street Pocket Park is one of the newest, where residents themselves are helping to design some of the artwork. Anna Marcos reports.
Day of music, fresh air, and art, as this community near Echo Park celebrates the groundbreaking of the new Patton Street Pocket Park.
It's a pretty big deal, you know, with my son Aiden, six years old, seven years old. It's nice to have the park really close to our home.
Every little place and, and space and, and place that we can find, we're going to capture it, and we're going to turn it into a park.
This marks the 23rd pocket park the city breaks ground on as part of its 50 Parks Initiative, an effort to make urban areas more park-rich. But for a tiny plot of land, Patton Street Park will pack a punch. Meandering paths will lead to a sailboat play area, community garden, plaza, a swing-and-sand area, pockets with fitness equipment, and places to play, sit, climb, or even do yoga. Best of all, the bentas will have mosaics that community members themselves are designing.
We're doing a mosaic workshop.
You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35.
We're designing and fabricating the benches, which are going to go along the perimeter of the pathways in the park.
Patton Street Park will be close to a community center and swimming pool.
Our city, our channel.[1342.65]
What a wonderful way to be able to live in the community and walk to different parks for all ages.
It seems some can't wait for their new park. They're helping to lay in some of the groundwork already. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering your taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Okay, good morning. Shh. Good morning, everyone. Happy Friday. Today's date is Friday, May 2nd. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 AM, and we truly enjoy having the public with us. So with that said, let me inform the clerk. At this time, we do not have a quorum, but I do believe we can and we should start today's presentation portion. And I'd like to, Mr. Coretts, I'd like to turn the floor over to you at this time. Is that all of your noy-- is that your noisy-- is that your noisy presentation, Mr. Coretts? Screeching chairs. Is there sugar involved in this?
I always try to make a dramatic entrance, so. So it's my honor to recognize longtime Los Angeles business owner Stan Berman, who is celebrating the 50th anniversary of the beginning of his legendary business, Stan's Donuts in Westwood Village.
Let's give Stan, Stan.
Although I have to admit, I have only been having donuts there for 45 years when I discovered it, around my time at UCLA, but pretty close. Stan's a Philadelphia native, a fourth-generation baker who followed in the footsteps of his father, who was a baker in Philadelphia, and both his grandfather and great-grandfather, who were Russian Jewish bread bakers. He first developed his baking skills while working in his family's Philadelphia bakery, and later perfected his craft studying at the bakery school at Camp Lejeune in 1952, while serving in the Marine Corps during the Korean War. And those Marines must have eaten well. And who later served his country as the pastry chef at the Camp Pendleton Non-Commissioned Officers Club. Stan moved to LA with his family in the early '60s and began making donuts in Westwood Village in December 1963, while visiting a friend who owned a tiny storefront called The Corner Shop that had once housed a Vandy Camps Bakery. The name of this tiny shop evolved over 50 years from The Corner Shop to Stan's Corner Donut Shop to simply Stan's Donuts, while a window sign that proclaimed Stan's motto, "Eat dessert first, life is too uncertain." And that has remained unchanged for decades. His shop at the corner of Wayburn and Broxton Avenues in the heart of Westwood Village sits directly across from the two most historic movie theaters in Westwood Village, the landmark 1931 Fox Westwood Village Theater and the 1937 Bruin Theater, which have hosted thousands and thousands of premieres of red carpet movies for more than 80 years. In addition to his bestselling glazed donuts and ever-popular cake donuts, which he sold for just 10 cents in 1963, Stan has invented many new and innovative donuts, including his world-famous Reese's Peanut Butter Pocket, which has garnered international acclaim. Although I have to admit, I make a practice of not having more than one a year, because it's a little too calorie-heavy, but it is worth it every year. The Los Angeles treasure Hughle Hauser twice featured Stan's Donuts on his award-winning KCT television travelogue show California Gold, in recognition of which Stan Berman renamed his famous peanut butter donut, The Hughle. Stan's Donuts has been recognized for decades among the best donuts in the country and is on countless top-10 lists, including LA Magazine, LA Weekly, and the Huffington Post. He's generously supported many charitable organizations and causes in Westwood, UCLA, and Los Angeles over 50 years, has brought Westwood Village much acclaim. And his wife, Ina, if I'm pronouncing it right, whom he met in his service in the Marine Corps at the former Westside Jewish Community Center, which then doubled as a USO club, as well as his three children and six grandchildren have all supported his vision to create the best and have contributed much success to this tiny corner donut shop. They have also hosted for many years voter registration event every week since 1968. And for 50 years, it has brought worldwide recognition to Westwood Village, great joy, and a little pocket right there for me and a few other people that have eaten there. So it is my privilege to recognize Stan and Stan's Donuts, and we'd like to ask Stan to say a few words.
This certainly is an unbelievable honor to be doing what I've loved to do all my life and to be recognized. A small businessman has a difficult time getting his product four or five blocks away from his home business. Mine has gone around the world just because I love doing what I'm doing and also loving every person that's on the other side of the counter. You are really what makes me spin. The people that come in with their quarters and dollars, you are the guys that I love, and thank you all for every moment of my life. Thank you.
Mr. Coretts, I do have another member that would like to say a few words. I do want to say, Stan, congratulations. I am, I went to college in Philadelphia, so I've had baked goods from Philly. So I'm glad that now I know where I can go and get that Philadelphia spin to it. And Mr. Coretts, I didn't know if you were going to say this or not, but I see we have Chuck, a good friend of yours and mine, Levin with us today. And it's my understanding, per you, that for almost 30 years, Chuck and his mom would stand and get signatures or register people to vote or whatever. So Stan, your shop has done a lot to move the city of Los Angeles and the state of California forward. With that said, Mr. Englander.
I just wanted to rise and--
I'm using my time.
And using it well.
Wisely.
These are nutritious and delicious. I think we should offer the podium to you every Friday. Make this an official, regular thing. This is fantastic. Thank you very much. And what's great about the local community donut shop in 50 years is that you can think about, and we have one in our district as well, and we have several, but one that is sort of the icon. It's the gathering place. It's where you go, sit, and meet your friends and get a sense of community. And so much happens, as you said, not just the political conversations. You think about the local donut store and the local barber, and it just becomes a tradition to have folks come out. And 50 years is really incredible, so congratulations to you. I'm over my time, but I'm not done yet. And as a police officer, I want to also thank you on behalf of the LAPD for everything you've done. Appreciate it.
I'd just say that my wife's maiden name is Englander.
Oh, you--
So your relatives will come by any time and they'll give you a free dozen donuts.
Do I get another box?
And I have to say, I don't think I've been the first presenter of a certificate before at these council meetings, but I guess when you give the council president everyone on the council a dozen donuts, you have a little extra clout. So having said that, it's my honor to present this certificate recognizing Stan's Donuts Day in Los Angeles as a 50th anniversary celebration.
Hey, Mr. President. Those are up. That's better than Meatless Mondays. Donut Fridays.
Yeah, there'll be a little extra poundage this weekend for City Hall. Speak, Mr. Englander. Would you be ready to proceed with your presentation?
I am.
So let's give Stan one more round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Stan, thank you for your service.
Oh, okay, well. How you doing? Sierra Canyon in the house. You guys stand close. Get everybody in here. Shorter people up front. Oh, that's me.
It's me, too.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Englander, the floor is yours.
This is exciting. Today, I have the honor of bringing Sierra Canyon Girls Basketball Team to the City Council. Today, we have Sierra Canyon Trail Blazers Division Four State Championship Girls Basketball Team. Yes. These young ladies are truly trailblazers. Sierra Canyon is our district's first girls basketball team to win back-to-back state championship titles. Last year, they won the Division Four State Championship with a 47 to 33 victory over Pinewood of Los Altos Hills. This year, they defeated Justin Sierra High School of Napa Valley 64 to 37 in the Division Four State Final. The Trail Blazers have won 10 consecutive state playoff games, the longest streak by local basketball program regardless of gender. Now, to call out a few players. Zoe Gross, Sierra Canyon's lone senior, scored 15 points in her last high school game, capped by the Trail Blazers' final basket with 2 minutes and 5 seconds remaining on the clock. Kennedy Burke added 12 points, 11 rebounds, and 5 steals--
Why don't you have a raise there, yeah. Where's Zoe? Where's--
Right here. Put your hand up.
Yeah, congratulations, young lady.
Zoe Gross. Kennedy Burke.
Where's Kennedy?
I got to stand in front of these girls because they tower me. Kennedy Burke. Freshman Alexis Grisby--
Oh, right.
--contributed 13 points, and Gabby added 3 points-- Gabby? Added another 3 points for the Trail Blazers, who received all 64 points for their starters. Junior Cheyenne Wallace scored 21 points--
Oh, right.
--and 18 rebounds. A team is only as good as their coach, and the Trail Blazers are lucky to have this amazing coach. Alicia, just an incredible coach. And oh, by the way, this win marks the fourth consecutive state title for Alicia, who is an assistant at, is it Mater?
Modern Day.
Modern Day, when the Monarchs won Division One Championship in 2011 and 2012. And Sierra Canyon is near and dear to my heart. Both my kids attended Sierra Canyon as well. It's a phenomenal school with an incredible community background. They do so much, and these players, let me tell you, they have great academics, incredible work ethics, a great school, and they're proud because I believe not only are they the state champions, but they just commissioned and opened up a spectacular gymnasium on the campus as well. So they spent a lot of their years practicing in local gyms, going to Powerhouse. You guys still used to play at the Powerhouse, right, over in Chatsworth? And renting out facilities, finding any place to practice that they could. And they came from that to win the state championship. Truly trailblazers. And so on behalf of the city, we've got certificates for all of them, but for the coach as well, Alicia, which's got a little bit of Stan's Donuts on it, so we'll get that fixed. But I wanted to congratulate you and say, God bless you all for everything you've done. This is incredible. It's a great championship, and we're really proud to call you the champions. The state of California, the Trail Blazers--
Let's give the champions a round of applause.
Can I have to say a few words?
Oh, shoot.
All right, please step on up.
I wasn't ready.
Coach?
Well, I didn't know I would be speaking this morning, but we were very honored to be here. We had a tremendously successful historical year, not just for our program, but for the entire Los Angeles area. So we are beyond honored to be here, and we wanted to present this to Councilman--
Oh, very cool.
--a little jersey with his name on it.
Awesome.
Present that to you. You don't have to wear it. It's a medium. You might be a small. We ran out of extra smalls, but we have a medium for you. And we would love to--
Give me those donuts. Bring them over.
And we definitely want some donuts as well, so. We're a hungry bunch of girls that are still growing. But thank you so much for having us. We are beyond honored to be here, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, she's a pistol.
No, Mitchell, Alan, the clerk, said, of course, we want to bring Stan's Donuts back every Friday.
Absolutely.
But, Coach, we want to bring you back every Friday as well. So anyway, and young ladies, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And you--
All right, everybody.
Don't be so shy. All righty.
One more.
Cheese.
You're the best turkey taker ever. Wow.
All right.
Let's give him another round of applause.
Not bad for a short little guy.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Price, as Mr. Englander moves, then you will begin your presentation. In fact, as Mr. Price is moving, let's, we have a quorum. Why don't we go through the agenda quickly? Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Buscagno, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Coretts, Correa, Labans, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business. Bye, ladies. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Weezer moves, Sadio seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bloomingfield moves, Faro seconds, next.
Mr. President, items 1 and 2 are items noticed for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety recommends that item 1A be received and filed in as much as it was determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, and thus exempt from lien processing. And the department for the recommends that item 1B be received and filed in as much as the lien was paid in full.
Okay, so without objection, that'd be the order. Cards?
Mr. President, we do have cards on both items.
Okay, let's hold them. Let's move forward to the next.
That brings us to item number 3. It's an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, specials on item 3. I don't see any. Why don't we prepare to vote on this item? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, pardon me, that will go over one week for a second reading unless reconsidered later with 12 members.
Okay, well, let's see if we get 12 today. Let's move on to items 4 through 9.
There are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on items 4, 5, 6, 7, and 9. That leaves item 8 for you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Parks? Oh, you want 9 special? Okay. 9 special for Mr. Parks. Let's vote on item 8. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to today's special meeting, if you'd care to go into it. However, once entering the special meeting, we cannot leave it until all items have been considered.
Okay, why don't we go into that later? And now, Mr. Price, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. Since taking office, our focus has been on improving the quality of life in our community, cleaning up our streets, tackling the blight, advocating for more resources in our neighborhoods. For decades, our community has struggled with irresponsible business owners who consistently ignore the laws, and they have created magnets for crime and violence. The Times Square Liquor Store on 4200 and Broadway is a leading example of one of those negligent businesses. The process of revoking the liquor store licenses are not easy. The revocation of alcohol sales at the Times Square Liquor Store started in October 2009 with an initial hearing by the Planning Department imposing conditions to mitigate the nuisance. LAPD made nearly 140 arrests since 2009. LAPD made nearly a hundred and forty arrests since two thousand and twelve for everything from public, public intoxication to selling to minors. This is why I want to personally thank the members of the Newton Division and Metro vice for their tireless efforts, persevering through the revocation process that took more than four years to complete. On January thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, zoning administrator Lourdes Green acted to revoke the Times Square liquor license and found that this liquor store had significantly negatively impacted the surrounding community, and that its residents had been harmed by the continued nuisance activities that, that existed, and it placed a heavy toll on police resources. So I, at this time, would like to present a certificate of recognition to each of the officers for their outstanding service. I'd like to commend each of you for your hard work, dedication, and your commitment to making our community better. So I'm proud to present from the Newton Division Sergeant Domenico Sanchez. Sergeant Rodolfo Fuentes. Officer Nicholas Balzano. Officer Christopher Escalano. Officer Ronald Sanchez. Officer Vanessa Diaz. Officer Tracy Marafufo. Officer Rene Santos. Let's give them a hand from Newton.
Let's give them all a hand, thank you all.
And, and we want to, we want to recognize our detective support division from vice, who was also instrumental. Officer Justin Fuller. Officer Robert Bernuman. Officer Ione Enriquez. And Officer Brandon Marmot.
Let's give them a round of applause for all, all that they do for each and every one of us.
And let's, and let's like to hear from our Newton captain, Propac, for some remarks. Captain?
Captain, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning to you, sir.
I'd like to thank the community for their direct involvement and all of our city partners for their collective effort. Disclosure's been a long time coming for this neighborhood, and it gives the community a sense of satisfaction and belief in our collective efforts and capabilities as city government. On behalf of the Police Department, specifically Newton area, we thank this council for your recognition and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you, officers, thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Corcorian, if you could, at the appropriate time, make your way to the center aisle. You'll be followed by Mr. Sadio. Paul Corcorian, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, if you've ever visited the Bellagio in Las Vegas, if you've ever visited The Grove, or if you've visited the Americana in Glendale, you've visited a place that is of great interest, a lot of interesting architectural features, a lot of fun things to do. But anybody who's visited those places, almost universally, will come away with one thing that they comment about the most, the fountain. Everybody who visits those places for the first time will say, you gotta see the fountain. It's the most incredible thing. Well, the one thing that all those places and all of, most of the most iconic fountains that you'll see, modern fountains around the world, have one thing in common. They were all created, they were all designed, they were all researched, they were all built right in the San Fernando Valley at Wet Design of Sun Valley. And I'm so honored to be able to recognize Wet Design, their founder Mark Fuller, and their executives who make Los Angeles so proud throughout the world by the work that they do. Wet Design, since it was founded in nineteen eighty-three, has designed over two hundred of these magnificent fountains and water features in twenty countries around the world. Most recently, one of the tallest buildings in the world in Dubai is going to feature the world's largest fountain, the Dubai Fountain. Actually, that's already open. It was, it was just opened, designed by Wet Design. You'll see their projects, as I say, in Las Vegas, the Fountains of Bellagio, the Mirage Volcano. And here in Los Angeles, for many, many years, Wet Design fountains have marked different eras, but been iconic nonetheless, in the Gas Company Tower, the Music Center, and more recently, The Grove, Universal City Walk, and, and the Americana over in Glendale. Wet's design, Wet Design's work has even made it to the Olympics. And they're gold medal winners all throughout the year, but especially, they were prominent at, at both the Sochi Olympics and in Salt, the Winter Olympics in Salt Lake City as well. Wet Design has been featured in interior design, the New York Times, the Los Angeles Times, CBS News Sunday Morning, and importantly, employs over two hundred talented individuals who bring a whole range of creative and business and scientific expertise together. And that really, I think, one of the reasons I wanted to recognize Wet is because Wet represents the best of what the Los Angeles business community offers. This is a place where innovators come from throughout the world and do things that no one has ever done anywhere. And Wet Design represents that. Los Angeles is a place that brings together science and creativity and innovation and artistry in one place, and that's what Wet Design very much represents. So with that, I'm pleased to recognize the founder and CEO of Wet Design, Mark Fuller. Mark?
Let's give Mark a round of applause. Welcome.
Councilmember Corcorian, I'm pleased to say that we're actually up from that two hundred. We now have two hundred and fifty families in San Fernando Valley. Happy citizens of that community. And I'm also pleased to say that as proud as we are, and we are very proud of the work that we have done here in Los Angeles and in the state of California, ninety-five percent of our work is outside the state of California, which means we're taking money from those folks and bringing it here. And of that ninety-five percent, seventy-five percent is outside the U.S., and so we're taking those folks' money and bringing it here too.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I would like to extend an invitation to all of you, ladies and gentlemen of the council, to come and visit us at Wet. We, we have a really fun campus. Our creativity, I think, is on display, and I couldn't compete with Stan in terms of bringing you donuts. I would have had to have offered you just a glass of water, and that didn't seem like much. But if you, if you come to Wet, you'll have a fun time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. And I want to just add one other note, too. I've actually been out to the campus when I first was elected to the council mayor via Ragosa, and I went to visit the folks at Wet. And it is a remarkable place. It's remarkable for the work that goes on inside, but it's remarkable also because it is a demonstration of this company's deep, profound commitment to the environment and sustainability. And you see it in features throughout their building, not least of which is their green parking lot, and many other things that, features that demonstrate their commitment to our environment. And so I want to thank them for that as well. And congratulate, on behalf of the City Council, I'm proud to congratulate Wet Design for the tremendous work that they do, making Los Angeles proud throughout the world and employing hundreds of Angelenos in very, very good, high-paying jobs. Thank you very much for being a part of our community. Thank you. Come on up here.
Thank you, Mr. Corcorian, and I, I held back from following Mitch's suggestion. So if we could get Mr. Sadio to please move to the center aisle for your very important presentation. Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, today's a very special day for the city of Los Angeles, the city of Hollywood, of film, art, and entertainment. We've had an incredible month for the Latino community, for its artists, for its storytellers. As you recall, about a month ago, I got up and spoke about the showing of, the opening of the movie Cesar Chavez. A few days later, there was a screening of a biography of Ruben Salazar, just ran on PBS. Last night, we saw a film called Caesar's Last Fast. Last week, we also saw a pilot for a new film that Fox is producing called Gang Related, opening a few weeks in May. And today, citywide, AMC, we see the opening of a film called Water and Power. And Water and Power is a story of two brothers, one who becomes a senator, Senator Gill.
Pardon me, what name was that?
Yeah, did I say, oh, that was Senator Gill. And his brother, Gabby, Police Lieutenant Gabby. And they're, they're twins, and they grow up, their father works for the Department of Water and Power. And he instills in them values of loyalty, of pride, of civic duty. And so it's a story of these two men as they come to power as young adults. And so this opens today. It's called a cautionary tale because it's about an emerging community as they struggle with governance, as they struggle to lead this city and no less this nation. And so I'm very happy to be here. It's had great success as a play. Ran at the Mark Taper, oh-six, oh-seven, won the Drama Critics Award. It was well-acclaimed as a play, and now has made that extraordinary transition to film, where now it turns the eyes of the city on itself as it exists today and looks at its future. And so I'm very honored to be here with actors of the film and giants, both in politics and culture. Let me introduce the author, the filmmaker, the great researcher, Richard Montoya.
Let's give Richard a round of applause. Thank you, sir.
Yes. Nicholas, Nick, Nick Gonzalez, a great young actor.
Who plays Senator Gill?
Senator Gill's not here today.
I bet he's an extremely handsome guy.
He's a good man.
Very young-looking.
He's a good man.
Vigorous, all right.
Emilio Rivera is seen as in Sons of Anarchy and many other films.
A great, great actor. Yeah, let me, one of my favorite shows.
It's an honor to be here, sir, it really is.
Edward James Olmos, a giant, both in civic leadership and theater and the arts.
President Wesson, we tried to cast someone to play your role, but Sidney Poitier was not available on that day.
He's a little aged, why Denzel?
You Denzel?
That, I could do that. Columbus short, I could, yeah.
Nice to see you this morning, sir. Gil Sadio's life is grafted onto the film from his humble beginnings at Estrada Courts and Boyle Heights and, and that, that story that Ben Affleck and the guys from Boston have been able to tell so well about Southie and that, that a lot of America's story begins in these, these government housing projects, and, and that's where the lives of Water and Power began. This was filmed in twelve furious nights on the streets of L.A. in all of your districts, every single one of you. We didn't film outside of the city because we weren't permitted in the county, thank you. But we've crossed paths with many of you, Councilmember Weezer, my buddy over there, Mr. Ofero, good to see you this morning. Whenever you think it's routine coming in here, it's not. You learn something, and being a commissioner, proud commissioner for the city, this is a great day. We, we, we do need folks to go out to the theater this weekend if we're to survive another weekend. It's a brutal business, but we can't complain about it. That's, it's, it's the business that, that we've chosen. I did want to say that Mr. Olmos this morning has put in a bid to buy the Los Angeles Clippers and to be the first Chicano owner of a national NBA team. Our team of, my, our ladies, Madeline and Delia, working really hard on getting the word out for the film. We are, have posters on every taco truck in the city, every ice cream cart. We're at Citadel, the electronic billboards, we're in radio, television. We've got fantastic reviews in tomorrow's L.A. Times or Monday's L.A. Times, L.A. Weekly. We've had to fan out and do exactly what you do, make a political campaign out of this movie. Take a page from the NAACP and, and get our organizers behind us. There's busloads coming from Fresno this evening. There's people coming from, from every part of the California region to come and, and show their support because we are in a campaign, and we're in a campaign for our lives. And, and art and culture, it can be a matter of life and death. It's, it's the very core of our city. And the, the sooner we get young kids involved in filmmaking and writing and art, you all know that well, that's the work that you've all been doing, and we're all on the same boat on that, you know? It's not just about an opening night party. We didn't even have a premiere. What we did was show the film for free at Grand Park. And Gil Sadio and Gloria Molina invited over almost two thousand people to Grand Park. It was a peaceful, creative occupation of Grand Park. And it was a peaceful, beautiful night, and we showed the film out in front of City Hall where, where really it belongs, and a gift back to the people. We didn't charge a penny for anyone to come and see that, and it was a glorious night. I do want to say that Mr. Gonzalez is a native of San Antonio and went to Stanford with the current mayor of San Antonio, and his mom, Mrs. Gonzalez, came all the way from San Antonio this morning. And happy to have her in chambers. Sylvia Mosher, thank you, Sezdi Galan, the good-looking son. I just wanted to turn the mic over to, how could we not hear from Mr. Edward James Olmos this morning? And again, thank you. I remember when President Ferraro was sitting right there looking at us years ago, and the DWP is right there, you know? And, and the L.A. Times is there, City Hall is here. The cathedral is just over there. It is, it is a vortex, and it's everything that our movie Water and Power. It's an L.A. movie born at the Mark Taper Forum stage, for Angelenos, by Angelenos, and it will go out to the world. Mark my words. So ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, Mr. Edward James Olmos.
Es un gusto y un placer estar aquí con ustedes, no saben el gusto que tengo, y para todos ustedes que me están entendiendo. All right. For those of you that are Spanish impaired, don't worry. Please, just know one thing. What Richard has given us is close to a masterpiece as you're gonna get. If you saw the play, then you understand his writing and his style. What he's done by putting it on film has magnified the intensity of the words that he has written. It's a beautiful piece of work that I am proud to be a part of, and just saying that I'm presenting the piece to the world. I can honestly tell you, there's been only one other writer that I, I've ever seen or read his work that compares, and that's Luis Valdez. Between Richard and Luis, they have captivated and captured a segment of our life in a way that twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years from today, they will be looking at and understanding. It's a very difficult view of us, as was Zuzu. But this piece definitely hits at the very core. And when you see it, all of you, you will see yourselves. And it's a very incredible story of Los Angeles, looking from the east side to the west, not from the west to the east. And I can only say one thing, nothing is concrete in L.A. except the river. That's a direct quote from Richard Montoya.
And Mr. Sadio? I do have a member that'd like to say a few words, and that's Mr. Bonnie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Sadio, thank you for, for this presentation today. I'm very eager to, to see this film. It's an honor to be in the same room as, as Edward James Olmos, one of my favorite actors, particularly fond of your work. Particularly fond of your work is Justice Mendoza on West Wing. Not your biggest role, but it's one that I've really loved and appreciated. But really, I wanted to stand to say a few words with his mother in the room about Nick Gonzalez. I've been a big fan of your work since MTV's Undressed. You came to the attention of many gay men as a result of that role. Mr. O'Farrell doesn't watch as much television as I do, so... But your portrayal in Resurrection Boulevard was consistently outstanding and moving. And you're a phenomenal actor, and I look forward to your performance in this film as well. Thanks.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, and Gil, also, thank you so much for bringing this wonderful presentation to us. And my brother, Richard Montoya, you are an incredibly talented person that have shared those talents with all of us. And it's great to see that you have often brought out voices for people to see that are often not heard, and the inclusivity you give to this city, and it's needed. And I'm sure with this movie, we will continue to unite the city because all the voices of everyone in the city are being heard, no matter where you come from. Thank you so much. You are an awesome, talented actor, and now a writer. And we hope to see more great things from you. To my brother, call him primo, who, mothers, I always love to say this, his mother's maiden last name is Weezer. It's a very uncommon last name, as you know, so I always call him primo. But, you know, we always, you taught us something in the Los Angeles riots in 1992, when there were a lot of talking heads on television. I remember you went out and just started sweeping. And you showed everyone it's about action. And since then, and ever since you grew up in Indiana, and first in Boyle Heights, East LA, you've given so much to this city. Thank you so much. Now with this great city, with this great movie, telling a story from the east side, like you said, we're going to see more because people like you continue to do the great work for the city. Thank you so much, my brother. And now the great actress here, Felicidades, thank you. We all look forward to seeing this great movie. Thank you.
Mr. Sedia.
Mr. Montoya, on behalf of this, your city, City of Angels, you are our angel today. It's with great appreciation that we honor you for your contributions, commissioner, writer, author, and storyteller. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President. AMC, throughout the Southland, opens in a few hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer, you can make your way to the center aisle. And Mr. Englander, if you could come help your president out here.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues in public. It's my great honor and pleasure to have in chambers today and to present a special resolution in honor of a great poblano. That is, a person who comes from the state of Puebla in Mexico as we celebrate Cinco de Mayo and as it approaches. Before I present this wonderful person, I wanted just to give a very brief history on Cinco de Mayo. And for those of you who don't know, the history of Cinco de Mayo refers to a battle that took place near the capital of Puebla in the Mexican state of the same name when 5,000 ill-equipped Indians defeated the better armed and trained French army on May 5th, 1862, 152 years ago. The Battle of Puebla came to represent a symbol of Mexican unity and patriotism. And almost as quickly here in the United States, the battle became a cry to defend democracy and defeat slavery in Mexico and the United States during the American Civil War. In the 20th century, Mexican and Mexican-Americans in the United States embraced Cinco de Mayo as a way to encourage cultural pride among young Latinos. Today, we're continuing our very own Cinco de Mayo tradition here in City Hall, which is to honor individuals working with the Unión de Poblanos en el Exterior, also known as UPEX, who hail from the state of Puebla, Mexico, where this holistic battle occurred. UPEX does great work on behalf of our Mexican immigrant community. They also take great pride in keeping the traditions of their state of Puebla alive here in Los Angeles. And before I go on as well, I want to recognize a few individuals who have joined us today. I want to thank UPEX and recognize their president, Don Alfredo Gomez, as well as the other poblanos who are joining here today. Thank you so much for being here. Gracias.
Round of applause, yes, thank you.
Also with us today is the Mexican General Counsel, who as many of you have quickly have come to know, Council Carlos M. Sada. We also have Andino Aguirre, President of the Comité Mexicano Civico Patriótico. Gracias, señor Aguirre. Gustavo Quijares from COFEM. And last, but certainly not least, I want to recognize right now Dr. Hayes Bautista from UCLA, a professor who has done extensive research on Cinco de Mayo. He has written a book on this subject and has quickly, I think, begun to clarify the misconceptions about Cinco de Mayo. It is not the independence of Mexico as many of us believe here in the United States. But he certainly has taught us the importance of this battle and how it actually helped the North in the American Civil War win that Civil War battle. So now I'd like to introduce Jorge Matei, an extraordinary poblano who has had a major impact in Spanish radio and television across the United States. He is currently the Vice President for News for Mundo Fox. He has also been at the forefront of promoting the poblano Mexican heritage that is the root of our pride in Cinco de Mayo and all it represents. Jorge, started in 1996, joined Univision as news director in a variety of cities, starting with Dallas, Texas. During his tenure, he increased audience newscast ratings and was nominated for a National Emmy Award. Here in Los Angeles, he was promoted to Vice President of News for the leading Univision station, KMEX-TV. He is the recipient of two prestigious Peabody Awards for the 19-part series on Latinos in the United States titled 15% de los Estados Unidos, 15% de los Estados Unidos, in 2006, and the creation of the marketing campaign Ya Es Hora Ciudadanía in 2008, both produced for the Univision Television Group. This campaign has since grown dramatically and has helped thousands of Latinos become naturalized citizens across the country. Let's give him a big round of applause for that. Thank you so much for helping our people become citizens. When Jorge is not working, he finds himself involved in several unique and interesting projects that he is passionate about, one of them being along with his wife Bianca Camacho de Matei, who is with us today. Bienvenida. They are the co-owners and co-founders of Watu Si Watoto, a wildlife campground located in the African Safari Conservation Park in Puebla, Mexico. So I want to thank them for the work they do. And I actually visited Puebla last year. He visited and went on with a trip with us. I knew him here from Los Angeles, but had a great time just spending time with him to see his real pride in Puebla, where he's from, his pride of the work that Latinos are doing in the United States. But we wanted to recognize him at this time during the Cinco de Mayo festivities for his contributions, not only to poblanos, but to all of the United States in terms of what he's done to continue to support our civic discourse here when it comes to the news. So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd love to present this, oh God, this is one of the biggest I've seen here. I'd love to present this resolution on behalf of the City Council to Jorge Matei as the recipient of this year's Cinco de Mayo recognition from the City of Los Angeles, celebrating Cinco de Mayo. Felicidades, amigo.
José, thank you very much. Thanks to everybody. I will be very brief. Yes, I am from Puebla, definitely the best city in Mexico. But I was born in Puebla, so I am a poblano, I could say, by accident. 25 years ago, I came to Los Angeles to live with my, well, I got married with the perfect woman, Bianca, and we decided to come to Los Angeles for one year, the story of all immigrants. And 25 years later, I am still here. I love LA. We love LA. We decided to call LA home. I love LA because of its complexity. I love LA because of its diversity. I love LA because of civility. I love LA because it's a city where you can dream big. I love LA because I learned here the meaning of accountability. I love LA because I learned a lot about leadership. I remember being a reporter here and having my first interview with Mayor Bradley. I remember doing lots of interviews and covering Art Torres, Gloria Molina, Esteban Torres, Mike Hernandez, Alex Padilla, Antonio Villarrealosa, our present mayor, obviously Gil Cedillo. José Weezer, by the way, a man of great vision. A few months ago, he went to Puebla to see how we can connect these two great cities. I love LA because here I met the best friends I have, Dr. Hayes Bautista, Consul Sada, my friends from UPEX. So for all of that, thank you very much. I am really honored to get this recognition. Thank you, José.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And must I say, I'm very proud of Zacatecas, the state of Mexico where I come from, and the great food it has, it has great dishes. But you know, Puebla really gives it some competition. It was a place with wonderful food. And we have someone visiting us from Puebla today. Her name is Patricia Lial, member of the Congress de Puebla, the State Assembly. I want to welcome her to the City of Los Angeles. She is here representing the governor of Puebla, Rafael Moreno Valle. And with that, I'd like to present her a certificate welcoming her to the City of Los Angeles and thanking you for the work your city has done to connect with the City of Los Angeles. I think we have the second-most poblanos, second only to New York, I think, right? Is that correct? And New York is always up there competing with us. But on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, bienvenida y muchísimas gracias por estar aquí con nosotros. Gracias. Can we have an interpreter, please?
Me lo eche en inglés. It's a great honor for me to be here in this modern city.
It's a great honor for me to be in this great modern city.
She's actually going to, you're going to speak in English, is that?
Yes.
Okay, she'll say it in English, yeah.
Yes, tú me ayudas.
Okay.
It's a great honor for me to be here in this modern city and to receive the recognition on behalf of Honorable Congreso del Estado de Puebla and as member of the Commission de Migración y Asuntos Internacionales. And I am grateful to the City Council of Los Angeles, which represent a big commitment to continue our work in favor of poblanos, inmigrantes, in the United States and their families. Muchísimas gracias. Muchísimas gracias. Y un saludo de Puebla. Visítenos en Puebla.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, we would like to hear from our Council General and welcome him to these chambers. He's no stranger, and bienvenida de nuevo, Councilor. Gracias, pasé.
Muy buenos días. I'm delighted to be here again in this, the beginning of the celebration of Cinco de Mayo. I was impressed when I lived in San Antonio, in Chicago, in New York, and I thought that was it. But by coming to here, to LA, we're starting celebrations today, and it goes all the way for a week. So until next Friday, we're having the last event. So everybody's invited to join us in celebrating this very unique and special celebration of Mexico and the United States. So I'm delighted, and I want to recognize Councilmember Weezer. Muchas gracias por sumarse siempre a estas celebraciones. Y estoy muy contento también de tener la representación del Estado de Puebla, the Congress of the State of Puebla, true, Patricia Lial, who was recognized here. And also, la Unión de Poblanos, un aplauso fue, yo creo, muy importante. A special applause to los poblanos, a través de UPEX. Thank you so much. I'm delighted that they are so well organized, and thanks so much to all of you. Muchas gracias, feliz Cinco de Mayo, and hope you join us for the celebrations of this very special year. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very, one more?
Yeah, one more, please, Mr. President. As I was standing here, I recognized that we should hear from Dr. Hayes Bautista just to hear a brief presentation on his book and what he has found. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to remind everybody that the first poblano to Los Angeles actually served on this city council in 1792, José de Ortega, who, by the way, spoke Aztec as well as Spanish. We have a long history of poblanos here in Los Angeles. José Ortega's grandson fought in the Civil War when Latinos added their granito, their, they ran a little grain of sand to make sure this country had no slavery, civil rights for all, and rights, property rights for married women. And the poblanos continue in this great tradition of making this a great country, a great state, and a great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Great, congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and run through some of the agenda items. With that, we're going to, we've got all items called for cards. And since we're going to be heading into Budget Committee shortly, as well as the threat of a quorum, we're going to go ahead and have each speaker that filled out a card, one minute per item, but we'll take them all together. So Mr. Walsh, if you want to come on up first, we'll put five minutes on the clock for Mr. Walsh. That's on items one, two, five, six, and nine. So Mr. Walsh, one, two, five, six, and nine. Five items, so we'll give you five minutes, which is a net what you would have had anyway.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential, and @HollywoodDems. Ladies and gentlemen, stay tuned, though, when I, not under restrictions during public comment. Number one concerns non-compliance, public nuisance. You're doing an excellent job there. Number two, we need more alcohol in the city, 15 to nothing. It's a necessity, and a convenience. And this is Silo Vodka Bar, 221 West 7th Street. You know, if you're down there, sometimes you have to walk on West 7th, 10, 15, even 20 feet before you can buy alcohol. Why do we have the highest rate? Why was Judge Ferguson's son murdered? Because there's alcohol, Alcohol Hollywood. Whoever murdered and hit-and-run Judge Ferguson's son was drunk from the license that you gave them. That's number two. Now we go on to number five. Number five, again, this concerns reap where you're doing a good job. Next, my favorite, this is acceptance of a grant of $175,000 to ensure compliance with tobacco-related laws concerning the new e-cigarette regulations. Now remember, when this came in front of you, there was a motion to amend the e-cigarette anti-ban that Mr. Corret started, and Mr. Kerkorian was against the ban in clubs and bars and restaurants. And Mr. Kerkorian said at the time, and it's on the record, there is no evidence that e-cigarettes are harmful to your health. Well, I hope you read the LA Times because you caved in and spread your cheeks for the e-cigarette nightclub owners, and now it's all over. The federal government has said it. And if we had listened to him, children at restaurants would be breathing e-cigarettes. He is politically, I don't know about him personally, but... He is politically—I don't know about him personally, but as a politician, Mr. Kerkorian is human garbage. And he thinks the same about me. Number—okay, so that's a very good motion, safe stores. We have to crack down on e-cigarettes. Let people do it at home. This is my theory. You should smoke e-cigarettes the same places where you're allowed to masturbate, okay? Number seven, this again is Affordable Housing Trust. Number nine. Number nine is reinstating the reward offer. I think, again, this is what I'm asking. And I asked that racist swine, Robert Green, who's the editorial director at The Times, isn't it fair for me to ask—and he is a vile racist. The only reason he's not an anti-Semite, he's a self-hating Jew. Okay, this is what I'm asking for. I want to know how many reward offers are up. A few weeks ago, you had a reward offer that was collected on—seven years ago, you put it up here. How many reward offers are up? How much money is out there? And how much has been collected? And I've shown you the shirt that I bought on Hollywood Boulevard that says, "Snitches Get Stitches." And I want to say to everybody out there, if you say one word about who murdered who, about anything, your throat will be slit in this city and the cops will—you know what will happen? You'll be murdered, and guess what? For, in fact, telling about—for informing on a murderer, and then there'll be a reward out on you, and no one will correct it, collect it, and everyone will know who murdered you. Snitches Get Stitches. That's number nine. This is a reward. And again, this is not—it's reinstating reward, and you can do it forever. And incidentally, I don't need the full five minutes. Take the rest of it and shove it. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Have another donut. All right. So with that, we do have a presentation, actually, and I apologize, Mr. Kerkorian, if you can come up for a presentation. Thank you.
Colleagues, as you all are very well aware, this city has placed a very strong priority on trying to work to ensure that we continue to keep film and television production here in Southern California. And when we do that, we speak often about how important the film industry is to Los Angeles. And I think it's important to remind people, as I try to often, that when we speak about the film and television industry in Los Angeles, it's not just the people who walk on red carpets.
One second, Mr. Kerkorian. If we can keep the voices down—it is an echo chamber. This is really important. I want to be able to hear it up here as well. So if we can ask everybody, particularly staff on the sides, to keep their voices down. Shh, thank you. I'm sorry to continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. As I was saying, the film and television industry in Los Angeles is made up of countless businesses that employ people with good, middle-class jobs throughout the San Fernando Valley and the rest of Los Angeles. Many of these businesses are businesses that have been here for decades, that have formed the backbone of the international film and television industry. And one such business is the one that I'd like to recognize today, which is celebrating its 60th anniversary here in Los Angeles. Sixty years of contributing to innovation and change and modernization of the film and television industry and other industries as well. And that is Burns &amp; Sawyer of North Hollywood. And I'm very pleased to have them here to join us today. Burns &amp; Sawyer was Los Angeles's original motion picture camera house. It was founded by Jack Burns and Cliff Sawyer in 1954 and has been catering to filmmakers in L.A. and throughout the country for six decades now. Burns &amp; Sawyer has been known for its wide variety of dependable and innovative motion picture equipment, which has played a significant role, a behind-the-camera role, but it's been playing a significant role in Academy Award-winning motion pictures for all those decades, including Lawrence of Arabia. Burns &amp; Sawyer was instrumental in shifting the industry toward a more mobile Aeriflex camera, which became popular in films like Bullitt and Easy Rider and many others. And in 1998, after this long and storied history, cinematographer and gaffer William Muir, who's here with us today, acquired Burns &amp; Sawyer and merged it with his existing lighting and grip company, Gunner Lighting. So as the industry started to move into the digital era, this caused a lot of drop-off of business for many of the traditional camera companies. But Burns &amp; Sawyer was ahead of the curve and was one of the first to adapt and start working on digital video cameras from Sony and Panasonic as early as 2000. Burns &amp; Sawyer moved from Hollywood to North Hollywood, where it is located today, and they've been doing a magnificent job of serving this industry, but not just this industry. And Mr. Bonin, you'll be interested to know this as well. Mr. Bonin and I both sit on the MTA board, and MTA recently hired Burns &amp; Sawyer to replace the lighting between the Redline Station and Union Station. And they've innovated and created a new form of lighting that will last for 160,000 hours, these tube light bulbs, 160,000-hour lifetime, rather than the industry standard, which is about half that. So this is truly a company that, again, represents so much of what's the best in the business community in Los Angeles. Innovation, application of scientific knowledge, creativity, artistry—we find all of that in Burns &amp; Sawyer of North Hollywood. And before I ask Bill to come up and say a few words on behalf of the company, there is a brief video on the company, which I'd like to—
A sixty-year-old story of dreams in motion. The year is 1954. Hollywood is a thriving entertainment machine, studios, theaters, and two men with a vision, Jack Burns and Cliff Sawyer. Jack was an award-winning photo correspondent for Life magazine, and Cliff was an ex-GI, fresh from the Korean War. Together, they opened a small still photography camera shop. They maintained quality as an utmost priority and made it their mission to serve the customer with the best gear possible and the best service available. 1957. Jack and Cliff kept dreaming big and challenged the market by opening up Burns &amp; Sawyer Cine Equipment Sales and Rentals in Hollywood. The business moved forward with 16- and 35-millimeter motion picture cameras. In the 1960s, the company started manufacturing cine equipment and accessories. Most notably were the Omnitar telephoto lenses used for tracking rocket launches in the early U.S. space program. The rental business continued to grow, adding projects like Lawrence of Arabia and Easy Rider to their credits. In 1979, the company was purchased by Marvin Stern, and later in 1998, ownership changed hands to Bill Muir. And with the new ownership came the inclusion of Gunner Lighting and Camera. Burns &amp; Sawyer was now a full-solution rental company, offering camera, lighting, and truck rentals. As the company breached the millennium, it faced the full presence of the digital age, a battle of evolution for the entire industry. But Burns &amp; Sawyer adopted new technologies. At the end of 2010, Burns &amp; Sawyer moved its entire operation to North Hollywood, where it's currently located. Soon after the big move, the company auctioned all— Its film equipment and fully embraced the digital world of filmmaking. Today, Burns &amp; Sawyer puts the advancement of filmmaking in the foreground by supporting the progress of digital camera technologies, new lighting technologies, and educational facilities training the next generation of filmmakers. Most recent rental credits include Smashed, Philly Brown, the television show Bearing Sea Gold, and many other independent and commercial productions. The dream of Jack Burns and Cliff Sawyer lives on: quality gear and quality service. For an industry that lives in motion, Burns &amp; Sawyer exists as a one-stop rental shop with personality. Check out our website or visit us in North Hollywood and put your dreams in motion. Burns &amp; Sawyer, 60 years of service and counting.
So, members, as we fight to keep businesses here in Los Angeles and keep manufacturing here in Los Angeles, when we fight to keep film and television production here in Los Angeles, these are the kinds of companies that we're fighting for. Burns &amp; Sawyer, and I'm very proud to have with us today Cliff Sawyer, one of the founders of Burns &amp; Sawyer, as well as Bill Muir, the current owner. Bill?
Thank you, Councilman. I want to just express my gratitude, because none of us could be here without partners and helpers. And first of all, I want to thank Cliff and Jack for starting the vision and helping me to keep the company serving independent filmmakers, which has been so satisfying. But also, I really want to recognize the city of Los Angeles, which I think is the best and greatest city in our country. Every time we've needed something, from the Department of Building and Safety or the mayor's office, everybody has been so supportive, and we would think of nothing more than growing our business continually here in the city. So I really think filmmaking is the fabric of our city, and we're happy to be here. So thank you again very much.
Oh, thank you. We're happy to have you here. Let me tell you, very delighted. Sixty years. That is fantastic.
And so, colleagues, on behalf of all of the members of the city council, I'd like to recognize Burns &amp; Sawyer for its long and storied history in the film and television industry, for contributing so much to our city as an employer, as an innovator, as a role model to businesses throughout our business community. Thank you very much, and may you continue to succeed here for at least 60 more years.
Here, here. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian. Thank you, colleagues. While they're taking photos, we're going to go ahead and reconsider item three. It's an ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, did you have more? Okay, please.
We do have something for the city of Los Angeles. Before Jack Burns passed away a couple of years ago, it was his wish that these historical photographs he took of Jimmy Durante's nose be gifted to the city art collection. So we framed this up, and we're gifting that to the city on behalf of Jack Burns posthumously. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. We should do a photo like that of Mr. Kerkorian for next—okay, anyway, moving on. So we'll go ahead and reconsider item three. It's an ordinance. We'll go ahead and open the roll for the reconsideration and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes. So that item now is before us. Seeing no speakers, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That passes and carries through. Okay, so the next item, we're going to go back to cards for one minute on each. And Herman, you've got— You've got three minutes on the clock, please. And Herman, you're speaking on items one, two, and six. One, two, and six.
Friday. However, the item and point has to do with relative proposed liens. Living in filth and struggling against what L.A. puts against us are called liens or levies, because they claim that our inhabitable lifestyle is not to their ordinance. However, we have at West 3rd Street $1,500 going towards 4357 West 3rd Street, also $1,249 South Olgan Drive. Hopefully, these predatory liens will end and stop, and there'll be a better way of dealing with the public. First of all and foremost, notify them before you put the lien. It's a hardship. Now going on item two, another convenience for a liquor license at the Silo Vodka Bar, located here at 221 West 7th Street. But yet, the city continues to violate the rights, the civil rights of pedestrians who are homeless and drunk on the corner by removing them from this location next to the Silo Vodka Bar. If you're going to give permits for liquor license, then you should leave people who have liquor in their body on the streets, because it's never fulfilling, it's always fulfilling. Bud Light. L.A. Weekly, thank you for that comment. But it's so baloney, rony, when it comes to this issue, because Mr. Weisert stepped out. He's not here to talk about DUIs and how it affects and impacts our lives. And yet, the news has a report that they caught someone who killed and injured—based on item number nine, HollywoodHighland.org, John Walsh points out about rewards. Hollywood Highland, John Walsh, says, "Stitches Get Stitches." And you, stitches of niches, haven't doubt what the real issue here. We cannot continue to allow tyrants to come and be liberators on alcohol. Twenty seconds left. What can you say, Mr. Herman? I could bring out this good point. They are living symbols of racial hatreds for terrorism, violence, and other ignorance of brutality against people. You are the cruelty of power here, all 15 members of you, for that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Sacks, four minutes on items two, item four, six, and seven.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. It's wonderful how you expedite the time for the public here, Mr.
Want to stay on the items, please?
I am. Well, this is about necessity, your necessity to expediate the time for the public, item number two. Because it's not about public convenience, and we had a legal determination here. There was a lawyer who came up when one of the bars was turned down, and he said, "As long as the bar meets the requirement of being a necessity," which means that it's not available at any other location in the vicinity, it can be considered and approved. Doesn't have to be a convenience, it just has to be a necessity. Has to offer something that's not in the area. Even if—no, it has to offer something that other bars in the area do not offer. That makes it a necessity. That makes it legal to be approved by the city council. Makes a loophole the size of a black hole. And I held item number six. You want to create a new account for this money for the $175,000 grant to ensure their compliance with all tobacco-related laws, including the new e-cigarette regulations. Well, if you have tobacco-related laws being enforced, then why do you need a new account? Shouldn't the money just go into that account? Because you're already enforcing the laws. We have a fund for laws related to laws. Why not put the money in there? The same thing with item number seven. You're taking money from the CD-13 Camden Project. And what is the CD-13 Camden Project? And using it for the coronal apartments. According to this, you're going to transfer $1.5 million from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund entitled CD-13 Camden Projects to support the apartments. Then on page two, you're going to establish a new account appropriate funds entitled CD-13 Camden Projects. So are you taking the money from the Camden Projects for the coronal apartments? Or are you putting money in the Camden Projects for the Camden Projects? It's very confusing, but it's the legalese that you're using here. But who pays attention to the legalese other than the lawyers? Because councilmen just cater to the lawyers, because the lawyers cater to the developers, which brings us back to somebody like Donald Sterling and his ability to get— which brings us back to somebody like Donald Sterling and his ability to get his fantastic facilities built throughout the city while he was running his racial and derogatory comments that everybody knew about, but nobody could do anything about. You said one other way? Oh, in the being necessity, meeting necessity, greeting... You don't have any more presentations, right? Because I don't really want you to lose your quorum, and I don't want you to be late for the budgetary hearings. And how you fit that in when you cut everybody's public time down is beyond belief. But that's the way this council runs, and it's a shame that it goes that way. That being said, on to the next... On to public comment. What are we going to get for that? One minute? I know.
We've got Elizabeth Peterson on item two.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you.
I wanted to let you know that the Silo Bar has existed on Seventh Street for over three years. They're only requesting an expansion of 10 seats in the patio. They have been an anchor to this neighborhood. They have provided over six jobs to residents that live within the block. They have full-service food at the location. They've not had a single violation with the Alcohol Beverage Control Board or the Police Department. The applicant who is the operator is also the president of the Historic Core Bid, and they're very, very active in the community and have had a positive impact. So, we would respectfully request that you allow them to increase their seat count by 10 today through the PCN motion. Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much. Maria Johnson on item seven.
Good morning. My name is Maura Johnson, and I'm the Housing Director of Hollywood Community Housing Corporation. As you're all aware, with the loss of the CRA financing, the only permanent funding source for affordable housing was lost. This has caused a difficult financing model to become even more difficult. In order to move our developments forward, we're applying for many one-off funding sources. For our 54-unit, large-family Coronel Apartments development in Hollywood, we secured infill infrastructure financing from the state, but we still have a funding gap. HCHC would like to thank Councilmember O'Farrell for his leadership in helping us secure additional funding for our development. This financing from Camden Development truly makes this project a public-private partnership in the best sense of the word. Our transit-oriented development is located less than 1,500 feet from the Red Line Stop at Hollywood and Western, in an area where we have over 700 low-income families on our waiting list for affordable housing. We appreciate your help in moving us one step closer to creating new homes for these folks.
Craig Jones on item nine. Not here. Okay, we'll go ahead and submit the card that it was submitted for the file. With that, we're going to go ahead and vote on items one, two, four, five, six, and seven. One, two, four, five, six, and seven. Not nine yet. One, two, four, five, six, and seven. Seeing no speakers on the queue. One, two, four, five, six, and seven. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Great, twelve ayes. Now, we're going to go ahead and go to item nine.
Pardon me, sir, and for clarification, as in regards to item one, those matters have been both received and filed, items one and...
Correct, yes. Excellent, thank you, for a matter of record. And on item nine, I believe we have one council member, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Weezer, I'm sorry, Mr. Parks, one second. Mr. Weezer?
Number five, forthwith, please.
Five, forthwith. That'll be the order, without objection. I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Parks on item nine.
Thank you very much. I'd ask that we approve a reward motion on a renewal of a $50,000 reward on an incident that occurred on February 14, 2010. At 10:30 PM, 31-year-old Herbert Eugene Seymour Jr. was walking home from a nearby store where a suspect approached him from behind and shot him several times in the back for no reason. Seymour collapsed in the middle of the street, and the Los Angeles County Fire Department personnel, who arrived at the scene, pronounced him deceased shortly after 11:00 PM. After the shooting, the suspect left the area on foot, headed north on Western Avenue towards 104th. He was described as a black male in his late teens, early twenties. LAPD is asking for assistance. They have exhausted all leads, and the family is also asking that this reward be renewed. He's also... Mr. Seymour was an employee of one of the local Best Buy department stores, and his employer and co-employees are also asking that the city renew this. Anyone having information about the incident are asked to contact 77th Criminal Gang Homicide Division Detective Crossen and Detective Sam Arnold at 213-485-1383. And so, they'd appreciate if we get a aye vote on this reward renewal.
All right, thank you. So, with that, Mr. Parks, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes, and that'll be the order, and that's moved.
Mr. President, would you like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special?
Very much so. So, that'll take us to item 11 on the special for cards.
Pardon me, sir. Bloomingfield Bonnebois, Canelo, Sedino, England, Refuentes, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Twelve members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
You say that in your sleep, too? Okay.
Regrettably so.
Then, we'll go ahead for cards on one item. John Walsh, followed by Herman, followed by Arnold Sacks. All three, please come up together.
Mr. President, item 10 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll. As they're coming up, all three, please come up together. Close the roll and tabulate the vote on item 10.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we're on 11.
And, Mr. President, item 11 is a matter for which a public hearing has not been held, so 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, those 10 votes for consideration. We'll open the roll for consideration on that matter for number 11. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Before you start, Mr. Walsh, it'll be the last call for Herman and Arnold to come up if they wish to speak. John, the floor is yours.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. This is very interesting. You don't see this happen very often. Central Los Angeles Area Planning Commission makes a decision. They're appointed by the mayor, and you are asserting jurisdiction to block their decision. What happened here is they had a number of problems with this pedestrian bridge over West Temple, and they voted to stop the process. But then, the mayor and the city council come in and show us that these central planning commissions are a joke. You are asserting jurisdiction over them so that you can reverse what the central planning commission decided. They're all a joke. All the power is up here.
Are we looking at cruelty of power here? Are we finding it hard to believe that to review and include the addition of a pedestrian bridge for a previously approved and under construction at a 526-unit mixed-use project located at 909 West Temple Street? Is this under a earthquake-rated red area? We don't know. What red tape are you cutting to fast-track this item here, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Wesson? We don't know! By the way, Mr. Wesson, thank you for sitting behind me. I feel empowered now.
Can you stick to the agenda, please?
Let's stick to the agenda. HollywoodHighland.org will tell you more. Turn to our webpage.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Really, you have two items here. You have the Central Los Angeles Area Planning Commission approving this project, all right? Then, you have... You're taking action to deny an appeal, requesting a site plan review that would include the addition of a pedestrian bridge. So, it wasn't included in the original plan, because you're actually denying the opportunity to review the addition. So, what happens the first time is approved, and then these add-ons, time and material changes come along, and the developers learn this little two-step maneuver and beat the planning commissions and beat the public comment that comes along with those hearings.
All right, thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment on item 11. There are no speakers on the queue on that item. We'll go ahead and close... Open the roll and close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that concludes the special agenda. We'll adjourn the special agenda and go back into the regular session. Do you want to retake the roll, or we'll get to go?
No, sir. No need. Mr. President, that takes council back to general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, if we can get a minute on the clock each for them as well. Like to line up three speakers at a time. Anne Marie, followed by Craig Jones, followed by John Walsh. If the other two are ready behind you as well. Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
In January this year, the city council changed the definition of stakeholder with regard to neighborhood council elections. The change of definition made neighborhood councils even more vulnerable to abuse. The nebulous substantial and ongoing participation in community organization qualifiers allowed well-organized and manipulative interlopers by special interest groups inserting themselves in the elections to help promote their agendas. Due to the loose interpretation of the stakeholder definition, an online community created five months prior to our election, which held no meetings, had no brick-and-mortar office, and whose members declared a stake in the neighborhood as community interest stakeholder, defining themselves as a person who affirms a substantial and ongoing participation with the city council's boundaries, were allowed to vote in my neighborhood council election. Ordinance number 182830 should be reevaluated, and it's my strong recommendation that the stakeholder definition simply defined as one who lives and or owns property within the neighborhood council boundaries. Please strengthen that definition of stakeholdership. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You didn't say one minute. It should be two minutes. Okay, lifetime ban on Donald Sterling, and you knew, and Magic Johnson knew, and the mayor knew he was dying of cancer. What they're trying to do now is steal the team away from the survivors. When he dies, and that's going to be real soon, he's in his 80s, the property... The Clippers are owned by his two children and his son-in-law. They're not racists. You can't take the team away from them. So, what they want to do now is rush this through NBA, and then take it over in the next couple of weeks, and then steal the team from him, and then sell it to Magic Johnson and his friends at the Dodgers for half-price. That's what's going on here. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, thank you. Herman, followed by Arnold, followed by Brian. I'd like the others to stand behind you, the second velvet rope, which is why it's there, if you could stand there and wait for the next speaker.
Let's get off the topic of cruelty. All summer long, while we were trying different things and we were not smoking, funny things with me and Mr. Wesson making love at Grand Park, making love to Francie out on the stairways of City Hall to our favorite drink, sipping whiskey on a bottle, not thinking about tomorrow. Mr. Corretts, not tomorrow. All alone, we were making love at Grand Park, our favorite song.
Okay, if you could... You've got to take it back to...
Sipping whiskey out of a bottle.
Mr. Herman? Something that... Okay. This is disruptive, so we're going to fore...
This is Los Angeles Live, public comment.
No, it's not just general about anything. It's... We've got to read the rules, and it's got to be purview under the purview of the city.
To conclude, this is...
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you. Your time's up. Thank you. Have a good day. Mr. Sacks actually sticks to the subject, so... Thank you, Arnold.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. You know, when the meeting started at 10 after 10, the public is welcome to come down to City Hall. But the caveat is, come down in City Hall and lose your opportunities to speak that are given to you because of certain conditions that occur that aren't explained when you come down to City Hall. That's a little bit disingenuous. Now, granted, it's not like the Board of Supervisors, where they get 40 or 50 or 60 items on their consent calendar and only give you three minutes. They're supposed to give you seven minutes at this meeting for public comment on the items on the agenda. But for a quorum call and presentations, and by the way, there's an item on here regarding the budgetary items for the city apartments, there's nothing here regarding the budgetary items for public presentations that are a condition of every stinking city council meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Brian Barajas and Sid. Sid, is Sid here?
Okay.
If you want to stand behind the second velvet rope, Sid.
Yeah, let me read this. Both parties have failed the nation. It's time to shut down Wall Street. Now, the recent revelation of Obama's... Well, the cover-up that was... Took place with the Benghazi situation, LaRouche has made this statement. "The revelation of this suppression on the conscious role of the White House in defending the terrorists should lead to Obama's immediate impeachment. The White House has carried out a fraud against the country in 9/11 II, just as it continues to do in 9/11 I, where it is withholding the crucial 28 pages which reveal the Saudi role in the funding those terrorists." End quote. So, basically, he's basically calling on all patriots to come to rally against this British empire.
Thank you, Sid.
Good morning, councilmembers. For over one year, when I was here trying to discuss about my project, not even once that Mr. Weezer has been disrespectful to me. Actually, he's been very well listening and being very attentive. Yesterday, at the Budget Committee, I think I was very, very gentlemanlike to everyone, but Mr. Krikorian, basically being unprofessional by wagging his finger at me because I watched the videotape, at least three, four different occasions, by reprimanding me, by being disruptive. I've been here 12 months, basically trying to help 12 business owners, majority of them American Armenians. I never asked help from you, Mr. Krikorian. I did once. You rejected me based on valid reasons...
If you can, you've got to please direct it, direct it to the...
I am directing it. I'm looking at you.
Not to one individual.
Please, Mr. Krikorian, you should not be disrespectful...
Again, not to one individual. So, that was the second warning.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Okay, so, that concludes general public comment. And do we have motions for posting and referral?
Yes, sir, we do.
We'll go ahead and post and refer those.
The desk is clear.
Great, excellent, thank you. Do we have any announcements from council members? Any announcements? Seeing none? Do we have adjourning motions? Does anybody have any adjourning motions? We do have an announcement... We do have an announcement, Mr. Koryan, for an announcement. Okay, Mr. Bonnet for an announcement.
Yeah, colleagues, I just want to announce that you may remember that we did a reward motion a few weeks ago for David Pragerson, the son of Judge Pragerson and the grandson of the other Judge Pragerson. Last night, LAPD made an arrest in that horrible hit-and-run case, thanks to lots and lots of tips from the Palisades community. I want to thank the community, and I want to thank LAPD for their good work on that.
Oh, thank you for that announcement, and I appreciate hearing when we actually get that information back to share it with all of us. So, heartfelt thanks to the LAPD and all the community members that submitted tips. Mr. Sadio, announcements? Yes, sir.
Richard Alton has had a tough week with his health this week, and I just want to wish him well as one of the preeminent council members in the history of the Los Angeles City Council. I know he's watching, and I just want to say, get well soon, and we'll see you shortly.
Here, here, from all of us. Thank you very much. Seeing no other announcements, any adjourning motions, members? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.